Welcome, everybody. Emergency exits are to your right and left, left and right, on whichever angle you're sitting.
Thank you, and we're going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Good pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Robin, are there any public comments? Okay, thank you, we don't have any public comments tonight. Moving down to the minutes of the September 23 meeting.
Pam, is Brian joining us?
No, Brian's not here. With prior notice, he's not here. So, so the minutes were, the minutes were recently received and there's some things in them that have to be edited, so I'm not going to move that we approve them at this meeting, at this time.
Oh, and it says September 23rd. The intention was November 18th, right?
Yes. Okay. All right, so moving down to finance.
Okay. There's nothing remarkable in the Treasuries Report for November 2024, but this is the first time that we have not had the testing done on a monthly basis. So the next, this was, this testing would have been done monthly, but we decided that we're going to just do this quarterly, so the next one will be done in January. There was nothing remarkably different from what we've had in the last several months in the report. The number of outstanding checks, the assets, everything is in line with where we should be halfway through our fiscal year.
Fantastic. Okay, um, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Treasury Report for November 2024. Any seconds?
Second.
Any discussion?
When was this made available?
I got it about, just about, less than a week ago. It was emailed to me, I know who it was posted on the, on the share drive, but I got it.
It was, it was posted on the share drive and the packet.
On the website?
Posted on the website on Friday.
George, because we're not doing the testing, does that mean we don't know necessarily about checks that have cleared? Is that right? So that's somewhat of a, in your estimation, George, is that a reason to be concerned or was that like, not that big a deal?
Could something happen in one month that was remarkable? Yes, but I being the past, what I've seen in my term as the financial chair.
Right.
I haven't seen anything that was, you know, out there.
Right, other than we had a couple of months when a lot of checks hadn't cleared, right?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Yes, but it was, but it was, it was nothing that was extraordinary.
Got it.
George, my apologies, I should have seconded before we discussed, so I second. Okay, so we can engage in discussion.
No, John did, John did second.
Okay.
Okay. Anyhow, that was my only question about the budget was just the check clearing issue.
Do you feel like, you know, Rocky Smith is communicating better? You had voice some during a couple of months prior.
Yes. Yes, well, the last two, he's gotten to me about a week before, maybe a little less, but certainly better than, than it was before, so it's good. I mean, this month, there were only 14 outstanding checks, but it's not, you know, dramatic difference. It's been nine, maybe one month, right? Right, 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 right.
Yeah.
Okay.
It actually notes that there's 14 checks that are outstanding totaling $9,064.
And I think there's always going to be outstanding checks, so.
Right.
It's never, right.
I guess the concern is just that you would want such a large number of outstanding checks that you wouldn't know actually where your balance was sitting.
Right.
Understood.
You're just sort of.
But, but again, I think.
That's probably not.
But at a quantum of $9,000, we're fine.
Right, I think that's a, yeah, small potatoes relatively speaking, right?
Happily.
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, so I think we can take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All unanimous, Jen. Okay, moving down to the President's Report. I did a year, end of the year review. I'm proud to report that this 2023-24 end of year review is marked by resilience, growth, and unwavering commitment to our mission. Our library has remained a steadfast beacon of community learning and connection. Our library continues to evolve and respond to the changing needs of our patrons, reinforcing our commitment to being more than just a repository of books. We are a dynamic center of knowledge, engagement, and opportunity for all. This year, we hired our new library director, Jennifer Daddio, in February 2024. Our new staff assistant, Amy Caprellian, was hired in April 2024. Our children's head librarian, Robin Friedman, was promoted to Assistant Director in July 2024 while also remaining children's head librarian. And this year, our library budget passed staying under the tax cap. And should I read through or?
Yeah.
I actually think it's worth.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
For the record, I think it's actually worth.
Okay. Building and grounds, we've done a building assessment done by Lothrop. Safety and security work was finalized with Strategum. Financial, we removed the cash sweep from Valley Bank in, in July 2024. We completed an audit from July 1, 22 to June 30, 2023, and we have PFK representatives here tonight to further talk to us about that. We were awarded 90% of a New York State Construction Aid Grant at $40,000 for the audio visual in our, in the theater work and anticipating the final grant installment of $4,500 to be arriving soon and started work on next year's budget. Additional highlights are, we ranked in top 5 to 10% in most categories per WLS's 2023 Draft Member Library Stats. We donated art to the Historical Society. The Friends of Chappaqua Library had another tremendous book sale. Updated the employee handbook and comprehensive update of all library policies. And now moving into the long-term strategic plan updates, that we now have a mission statement of the mission of the Chappaqua Library is to be a center for community engagement and personal enrichment, providing users with a place where people and ideas meet to change lives. The, the part, the bullet headings are what is included in, it's as outlined in our long-term strategic plan. So I followed suit with that. So we have diversity, equity, and inclusion. Updated patron contact policy to reflect DEI values. Launched a book group for people with special needs and implemented regular DEI audits across all departments. Community engagement, Director Jennifer Daddio actively engaged with Newcastle community organizations, including Town of Newcastle Supervisor and Town Board, Rotary, Chappaqua Central School District, Ability Beyond ARC, Newcastle Historical Society, Garden Club. The library continues to participate in collaborative community drives. We have them in the front, in our front entrance way. Installed a display cabinet highlighting the local non-for-profit organizations right next to the front entrance and completed comprehensive website redesign. Library services enhancement. Implemented a later Thursday opening for staff training and meetings ensured, which ensures consistent, ensures consistent staff training and improves interdepartmental communication and cohesiveness. Sustainability initiatives. Continued partnership with Chappaqua Garden Club for sustainable library grounds management. Space and infrastructure optimization. We added a new study room by reorganizing electrical equipment. Addressed safety concerns in Lothrop's building assessment in the inner courtyard. Collaborated with Lothrop to create an engaging children's room, which we will push into 2024-25, and updated the facility's use policy. This is just, it's not everything, but it's, it's highlights. So needless to say, we've really had a fantastic year and looking forward to our next year.
You know, Pam, one of the reasons I wanted you to read this out loud is because I think this is really a testament to the work that you and Jennifer have done. And I think that this is remarkable for a single year, so I just want to put that out there.
Thank you, it's, it's all of us, it's a great board. Great board and the staff.
And the staff, absolutely.
Fantastic, thank you. So moving down, Jen?
Just financially, though, just a technicality, I wanted to point out that the Construction Aid Grant for the AV equipment was 2023. We're just being paid now, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the work was done during?
Earlier this year.
Yeah.
Completed early, first quarter.
It was completed.
2024.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, so Director's Report, just some announcements and correspondence. As Pam, as you said, we received 90% of the Construction Aid Grant in the amount of almost $41,000. Just today, we received a $200 donation from a very grateful patron. Also today, I was forwarded a, a post on Chappaqua Moms 2.0, just saying how much they appreciate the library and all the things that were going on here over the weekend, such as a heart concert, crafts for children, the plant exchange. There's a whole laundry list of stuff, so that was really nice. That was shared by one of our department heads.
This is amazing.
Yeah. The building assessment, we met, Robin, Bill Link, and I met with Lothrop today to go over the second draft. And I think that in January, there will be a final draft ready for them to present to you guys. And then we'll be ready to, we'll be ready to go at that point.
Great.
So that's moving along nicely. Robin, Marge, Amy, and I have all started to meet for next year's budget, although we're just in the preliminary stages. But I think we will be in good shape for this year, so fingers crossed on that. I had written in my Director's Report that Marge was investigating some of the school district retirement payments that didn't seem to be making sense. But since I wrote this report, Marge has straightened it all out and all the numbers are fine, everything is in line as it should be, so we're good to go on that. Under personnel, we, we had a special meeting with the board recently to ask if the board would approve signing up with ESI, which is an EAP company, which provides, it's an employee assistance program, which provides a lot of different things. There's a handout somewhere on this table, there's a handout over there if anybody wants to take a look at it. The cost per year is $2,500 and all of us on staff felt that it was a worthwhile investment in the staff. And I'm hoping that we can have a motion tonight to approve that.
Great, mhm. We'll do that, we're going to do that under policy and personnel.
Yep. Okay. And I think, I think that's all I had for tonight, that was just the highlights, so.
Thank you. Okay. Anything to add?
Just we had the volunteers.
Oh, yes.
Volunteers breakfast.
Okay, thank you.
Thank Pam and George for coming to volunteer breakfast, but it was to honor all the volunteers, including the library board. Joan Kuhn and Amy Berger and Amy Caprellian did an amazing job putting it together. It was lovely, we got a lot of nice emails afterwards thanking us for that. And George said some very kind words, very nice words, and I think it was great. So hopefully it'll be an annual or at least a biannual thing.
It was very nice to meet the people who've been associated with the library and the volunteer capacity for so long, some former board members. And it was just nice to hear them, you know, tell their stories and.
Yeah. Jen, can you talk about some of the roles that some of these people play as you explain to me?
Sure, so like you guys, you know, every, I mean, we run on, we have so many volunteers, I think we invited over 65 people. You know, folks like the Garden Club, who have been so instrumental with helping us with our plantings outside, but also with programming. You have the folks who help organize the Lunar New Year Program, which is coming up on the 1st of February, which is, from what I understand, no small undertaking and involves a lot of hands to make that happen. But it's all spearheaded by one volunteer or? Yeah. So yeah, there's, there's multiple people, there's folks on the foreign policy discussion who kind of run that program and they're all volunteers. There were people there that, you know, we have a bridge program every Saturday morning in the program room, that's all done by volunteers. I feel like the list is endless and I don't want to leave, I feel bad about leaving somebody out.
Nope, just wanted to give the public a taste for what that includes.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, I don't think I realized how many of the programs that go on at the library are run by volunteers and not staff. So it was great.
But I think it's, I think it's a testament to this town, this community, how beloved this library is. The devotion to this place is really, it's quite something, so.
And, and Joan, for our program person, for coordinating all of this, which is, which is really great.
And I also have to acknowledge there were a number of places in town that donated food, so Susan Lawrence, DeChico's, Whole Foods, thank you, and I feel like there's somebody else, I'm, there were four that I'm forgetting. Shunja, right, oh, yes, yes, so, but yeah, so we get a lot of donated food and it was just, it was lovely.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
While you're talking, can I just, I always love reading these numbers around the children's room attendance.
Yeah.
It's absolutely remarkable, Robin, amazing. Decisions 2024, cats versus dogs, 319? That is utterly remarkable, anyhow. Not to belabor the point, but this is just, I think, whenever time I look at these numbers, I think about how beloved our children's room is and the ways in which the programming really services the community. And the numbers here are just remarkable, so if the public were to ever look at, you know, is, are these services being used? Oh my gosh, the answer is absolutely and, and by quite a bit, so thank you, Robin.
Can I take the opportunity to mention that Jacob Denlow?
Yeah, can you say his name one more time?
Jacob Denlow.
Jacob Denlow. And remarkable. Yeah, yeah, remarkable, well, kudos to Jacob Denlow, excellent, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyhow, that's all I wanted to say about that.
Okay, I'm gonna go over to George now, yep.
Okay, I have nothing to add to the finance report that we talked about just a few minutes ago. But we do have someone here today from PKF, PKF, who's going to speak to us. Somewhat of a presentation. Is this Jeffrey Shaver?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome, Jeffrey.
And I see the mic is on, so.
And who's with you?
This is Claudia Legau. She's an audit manager with the firm, PKF O'Connor Davies. She was kind of in charge of the day-to-day operations of the audit. So if any, any specific questions, I'm going to be referring to her. Thanks for the introduction, again, my name is Jeff Shaver, partner with PKF O'Connor Davies. Happy to be here to present the results of the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. You have two draft documents in front of you. We keep these in draft form until the board, here's our presentation and has a chance to review, ask any questions. If there's acceptance by the board, we can, you know, just move to finalize, you know, finalize the reports within the next few days. The first page of the report, spiral bound book, after the table of contents, is what's known as the independent auditor's report. I'm not going to read the whole opinion to you as it goes into the third page, but this is what's referred to as an unmodified opinion. And in layman's terms, that's a clean opinion and that's the most favorable opinion that you can receive.
Great.
What that means is the numbers in the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. It doesn't mean that your, the numbers in the financial statements are favorable. It also doesn't mean that they're unfavorable, it just means that they're accurate and they're fairly stated. I'm going to take you through some financial highlights and I'd like to start on page 14 of this book. And this is the General Fund, Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance, Budget and Actual. You'll see it's a four-column presentation, the original budget in the first column. The final budget would encompass any transfers or amendments that would have been approved by the board during the year. Third column is the actual revenues and expenditures. Fourth column is the variance between the final budget and the actual. You can see in terms of the revenues, the budget called for revenues of $3,454,000, while the actual revenues were slightly higher, $3,516,000. The bulk of your revenues is in the form of the property tax levy that comes collected by, collected by the town and it's sent to the school district, who then sends it to the library. And you're generally going to collect every, every dollar of that tax levy, so you see no variance on that line item. There was a variance on the use of money in property category, that's where interest income is, is generally accounted for. And as interest rates have been generally high over the last several years, most municipalities have been doing better in that, in that revenue category. In terms of the expenditures, you'll see expenditures were initially, initially anticipated to be $3,359,000, while the actual expenditures were $3,202,000, some $156,000 less than was anticipated in the budget. So that's a net underspending of the budget. You can see there's a other financing uses category, which is a transfers out to the Capital Projects Fund. That's the library funding specific capital projects as part of its budget. And generally, what's been done in the past is any surplus money or any additional funds that were realized during the year are transferred over to that Capital Projects Fund to help the library defer those costs. Revenues less the expenditures or increase in fund balance before the transfers was $313,000. The transfer to the Capital Fund was $231,000 for a net change in fund balance of $81,896,000. The general fund started the year with $107,000 in fund balance. It ends the year at just under $189,000 of fund balance. I want to take you back to page 12. Page 12 shows the general fund. This would just be the actual revenues, so they would match what I just went through on the previous page alongside the Capital Projects Fund. So you can see the net change in fund balance, again, $81,896,000. And it's, and you can see next to it what's set aside for these specific capital projects. And there's the $231,000 transfer in, while there was only spending during the fiscal year of $141,000. So the net amount of fund balance in the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30, 2023, was that $1.2 million in fund balance. So between the general fund and the Capital Fund, there's fund balance of $1,390,000.
Jeffrey, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
That fund balance of almost 1.4 million, how does that jive with standard practice about the amount of money that we should have in that, in that fund balance? I, I've heard that we should have, you know, six months of rep resources in case something were to happen, is that, can you speak to that?
It's a hard question to answer. Every municipality is a little bit different in how much fund balance they, they should retain. You know, six months for a library would be a healthy amount of fund balance to have. You know, you have to think about your cash flow, do you, are you going to have enough cash to pay the bills? Libraries don't face, you know, like emergencies that other municipalities, like the town might face, public safety emergencies and such, and need some fund balance for that. The only emergencies you might have are, you know, repairs to the building, that, yeah, that, that, those kind of emergencies. So you'd probably need some fund balance, which would be in the form of your Capital Projects Fund to fund any necessary repairs. And, and also your, another factor is your revenue streams are quite consistent and reliable. It's, it's, you know, 90, 95% in the form of that tax funds and you're going to collect that every year through the school district at a, at a, a time that you can anticipate on a reasonable basis. So you kind of have to weigh all those factors. You know, some have suggested 10% of your budget to be, you know, a good, a good benchmark to keep in your fund balance. It, it also depends on, you know, your, your specific needs and what could happen to your, in your facilities.
I think now Rocky, I can check our notes, but I think now Rocky Smith indicated 33 to 50%.
50%?
Yeah. We discussed this on March 31, 2023, when we were preparing that year's budget and we asked their advice. Brian Cook would remember.
Yeah. George, I think you bring up a really good point. I know this is a very contested issue in some Westchester school districts as to, and you, you're nodding your head, you, you agree with it. In some Westchester County school districts, this issue around how much to keep in fund balance is a very widely discussed issue. And I think that, not for tonight, but I think that it's probably worth us having a conversation about what we think the appropriate fund balance is and what our peer libraries are doing. 50% sounds high, but, you know, yeah.
Jeffrey, can I ask you a question? So I've always been taught that the Controller's Office doesn't want libraries to pour money, right? So they.
Carry large fund balances.
Exactly, exactly, so to me, 50%, 30% I, I think is reasonable, but 50% seems high. Do you have an opinion on that or?
It, just speaking in generalities, 50% is, would be what I would call a very healthy fund balance.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I, that's how I would categorize 50%. Now, you may have close to that if you count your capital funds. But the library, remember, has, has earmarked, you know, 1.2 million of your fund balance to be towards capital projects. So you, you have total fund balance of 1.4 million, your budget's of, what about 3.5?
Right, so we're coming close to that number.
If you count the Capital Projects Fund, you're in that, you're in that ballpark.
Yeah.
But if the library has plans for that money and you're going to spend it on facility upgrades, parking lot, I know you, you've been doing or talking, you know, there's,
Right.
there's earmarks for that money and if you don't expect it to be there very much longer, you shouldn't count that as, you know, go-forward money.
Right.
In terms of go-forward money, you know, it's really a discussion for the, it really is a discussion for the board.
Yeah.
The state comptroller does, it's true, I would say it's true that they would criticize a municipal, any, any local government for carrying too much fund balance, what, what they think is too much fund balance. What exactly that number is for a library, I could not say.
Right.
I think it would depend on the facts and circumstances for each library.
I just think it's probably something for us to have a conversation about as we come closer to budget season.
Yeah.
Because I think it's an important conversation that needs to happen, yeah.
Every year.
Yeah.
Every year.
If I could just, along the same lines, um, on page ten, point you to the balance sheet. This is the general fund and the capital projects fund on one page. You can see the capital projects fund is the bulk of it, one point two million that I just mentioned. The general fund is a, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And, and it fits into these various categories that you see here in front of you. Non-spendable, restricted, committed, and unassigned. Non-spendable fund balance really should be taken out of the equation. Okay, it represents, uh, funds that have already been spent by the library, but that applied to like the next year's budget, so it's prepaid. It represents your prepaid expenditure, so you prepaid some bills. Governmental accounting standards tell us we have to earmark a portion of your fund balance to show, hey, the cash has left the door, can't spend that again.
I'm sorry, is that what's sometimes referred to as encumbered but not paid or?
Little different. That's, this is a, this is what we call non-spendable fund balance, meaning it's not in the form of cash anymore. You paid a bill related to the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year in twenty-three.
Right.
In twenty-two, twenty-three, the non-spendable fund balance is there to show, well, the cash is not available anymore. You've already used it. Um, what you're referring to as, as an encumbrance or a reserve of the budget would generally be reflected in the, um, actually you don't have any assigned funds here. It would, they would generally be reflected in the assigned fund balance category. You have another category here, restricted, restricted fund balance. That can only be used for specific purposes. The library received some donations years ago, um, and you can only use those, uh, those, that gifted money for very specific things, and that's the forty thousand dollars. So it's not for general use of the library. The committed funds are other, um, board earmarks of funds. And that's, and that's where the capital projects fund sits, as the board has kind of set aside those funds for specific uses. The residual fund balance or, uh, available for use at the discretion of the board is what we call the unassigned fund balance. And I, in some, in some instances, I might say that's the most important piece of the fund balance because it's not earmarked for anything specific. It's really available for use for any unexpected circumstances or any, you know, anything that might come up. And it's only forty thousand dollars, which is a very low number, it's a very low number. I think that's a function of this library earmarking most of its surplus funds into the capital fund to be, to be used for, for spending on, on facilities and such.
Um, I had a question.
Sure.
Where would I find the, uh, debt, outstanding debt that the library is carrying? Is that in any way?
You won't find it anywhere on there.
No, you won't.
It's, it's, uh, debt of the school district.
So it doesn't show up in this?
It doesn't show up, it's not debt of the library. Yeah.
So I'd have to look at the, at the Chappaqua School Board.
I, I do remember when the, there was, that debt issued, I think we were the auditors or maybe we were just coming on at the time. Um, there's, my understanding is that the school district owns.
Owns the building.
The building.
Correct.
And that's why they have to do the debt, so. And, and the land, so it's almost like you're a, ten, you're almost like a tenant of the school district, um, even though you don't really pay rent, like traditionally, one might in a commercial setting. So, um, legally, they have to, they have to carry the debt.
Right, got it.
The debt was issued in their name.
Right.
So the, that debt does not, um.
That's another meeting I have to go to.
It's another thing you have to go to.
Can I ask you one more question about that? Is the school board in its rights to demand how we spend the money at the library in any way?
You could ask your attorney about that for a more affirmative answer, but my understanding is no. You're a publicly elected board. You adopt your own budget. Um, the tax levy you get is yours, they have to give you that money. Um, it flows through them, but they have to give it to you and you're a separate entity. Um, there's the unusual thing about them owning the building and the land, which kind of ties you in with them a bit. But, um, other than things like that, I don't believe they have any oversight responsibility over, over the library.
Right.
But again.
They expect to approve, to have to approve anything regarding of materiality regarding the building and the land. And we've involved them previously as, you know, because of them.
Again, I'm not an attorney, so I don't want to act like I'm giving legal advice, but that's my understanding of how, of how it works. Um, you will see also, when I talk about the general fund and the capital projects fund, these are governmental funds. So they follow modified accrual basis of accounting. It only accounts for near-term inflows and outflows of cash. So if you were to have a bond in your name, the general fund, you wouldn't see a liability in the general fund. You'd only see a payment of the debt when you make a payment. When you do, uh, work to the building, um, you, we, you would see that as an expense of the capital projects fund, not as an asset. Um, however, if you look at page eight, this is a, a conversion from those modified accrual fund statements to the full accrual basis of accounting. And that is where, this is where you would see those types of items. So the way this is done is adding in the general fund and capital fund and, um, adding in long-term assets like capital assets and adding in any long-term debt. In the case of the library, there's about two point six million of capital assets. Now, that's outside of the bond work that the school would have done, but work that the library has done itself. So we, we also, we actually call them leasehold improvements since it is the school district's land and building. Um, and there's also some non-current liabilities and that, those relate to the pension plans. Um, you're a member of the state pension system. Also through the school district, they come, you, your portion of the state retirement comes on their invoice and they bill you for it. Um, the state apportions that total pension liability throughout the state to every municipality that's in the plan and a portion of it gets, um, recorded here. And also, um, lastly, and, and most significantly, is the benefit for other post-employment liability or retirees' health insurance. So the library, uh, is required to retain an actuary, to do a valuation for the, to put a dollar value on, um, not only the, what the current retirees are earning in terms of health benefits, but the current employees are also have, have already earned. So that's why you see the significant amount of long-term liabilities here. Any questions?
So some of these questions I have around debt and around what the board, where the board's position is, used to be debt, really has to go to the superintendent's office of this, in the school district to get a clearer picture of where we stand, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Okay.
We also, um, there's a separate document. It's a report to those charged with governance. Um, we kind of describe some of what I just described from the, uh, from the audit report. We kind of, you know, uh, repeated here. In this document, we'd be required to inform you if we identified any material weaknesses in your internal controls, we did not. We'd be required to tell you, um, if there were any unusual accounting policies or unusual accounting treatments. There were none. Uh, we'd be required to tell you if we identified any fraud, there was none. Um, most of the disclosures in here, I'd say all of the disclosures in here are kind of, um, standard, uh, boilerplate, you know, types of disclosures that were required to inform every board of. Um, there are a few, uh, management comments, as we call them, or recommendations. Um, again, these are in draft form, if you're just seeing them for the first time. And, um, if you have questions on them or would like to dispute some of them, we can still change this as it's, it's a draft document. Um, I don't know if you'd like us, I was going to let Claudia go through some of the comments if you want her to, or if you want to just talk to us, uh, afterwards. Um, with those kind of details, that would be fine as well.
Okay. All right, we'll talk to them after. That highlighting, is that just awaiting addition?
So at the time, we, we printed the drafts, we were waiting some items, we actually have those. Yeah, so, um, obviously those will go away in, in the final.
Yes. In the, in the aftermath of the financial issues that other Westchester libraries have faced around fraud, perhaps you know what I'm referring to, um, have there been any major changes that libraries have made to try and prevent what other Westchester libraries faced?
Nothing specific that I'm aware of. I think it's, um, some of the things I saw you doing before I came on are just, you know, those things that just need to be, not that they weren't there in the past, just need to be reinforced. Um, board oversight, um, looking at your treasurer's reports, asking questions.
Right.
Hearing from your auditors. Um, can you always prevent a, before it happens? No, unfortunately, you can't always, um, prevent a fraud. But, you know, having the, having a board and, and the director trying to keep their fingers on the pulse can prevent, uh, help prevent, you know, some things like that.
Got it. One more question I have. We would have to go to the school district to know what our pension liabilities are with the state and stuff, that's not necessarily.
Well, they're in here, they're, they're in, they're in the book.
They, they are in the book.
Yeah.
All right, I, I'll look at them. And, and they essentially are just a calculation given from the state of New York in terms of who our employees are and where they stand.
So the state, um, it's the state plan and the state plan gets audited, um, by a big national firm. Um, they have their own actuaries. And they also do like, um, a report that divvies it out to every single municipality that's in the plan within, within the state. And in, in your case, it's the Chappaqua School District that gets that liability. And we kind of take a slice of it because, you know, you're, you're a portion of that bill. So we've taken a slice of that and, and put it into this, these financials.
And the contribution rate that the state requires changes from year to year to year, correct?
They update the contribution rates every year.
Right.
Based on tier.
Five-year rolling average, I believe, right?
They use a five-year market average, um, to try to smooth out, you know, to prevent spikes and, and such.
Yeah.
Um, and updated, they updated every year. The past, recently, they've been kind of ticking upwards.
Ticking upwards in terms of the increased contribution that municipalities have to pay the state to cover their pension liabilities.
Exactly. The more significant liability to municipalities in this area, because the state, uh, pension plan is fairly well-funded and you'll see, you'll see in the draft document, it's, um, it, it varies year to year, obviously, but it's in the ninety, typically it's been in the ninety percent range, which means, um, the liability statewide is covered, um, you know, has an asset set aside for those liabilities of about ninety percent or sometimes even more, we've seen.
Right.
Um, the li, the liability for pension, uh, for retiree health insurance, there's no asset set aside to pay those benefits.
Right. And there you're subjected to the changes in the marketplace in terms of.
The way, whatever the health insurance rates go up, um, you have to continue to pay those rates for all your, your retirees.
Right.
They have, there, there is contribution rate, so you're not paying a hundred percent of that. Um, you know, there's an arrangement where they're paying some percentage of it. Um, but yeah, but obviously when the costs go up, the costs go up for, for you and, and the retiree.
Right.
Okay, so, okay, are you sure? Okay, um, thank you so much.
One last question, I'm sorry. This is not a criticism at all. Why does it take eighteen months to do a report from June twenty, twenty-three?
It doesn't. It doesn't. Um, there were some delays, I think, when the administration changed over. Um, not just the executive director, but the administrative assistant. We were, um, Claudia actually was, um, following up diligently. And when the previous administrative person left, we didn't know right away. So I think we were trying to reach out to that person, it was gone. Um, and it was just slow getting information. Um, we wouldn't like, we would rather come in and be done. Usually when we come in for fieldwork, I mean, if there's a, maybe one or two months that go by, there's always loose ends in, in any audit, so you expect that. Um, we really should be talking about working on the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four audit. I, I, I'd rather be presenting that to you today, actually. Um, so that's kind of how far we are behind right now. Uh, we need, um, you know, we need your accounting team to give us the word that they're, they're ready to start the next year's audit before we can come back to, to work on that. But hopefully that process does not take a full year.
It shouldn't take that long.
I'm sure that's underway, right, George?
I don't know.
I will, I will follow up with that.
Claudia, uh, just forgive me, this is my first time doing something like this, so, um, is your recommendations, should we do that separately with the board? Or should we do that here now or?
I mean, if you wish to discuss together first, then you can always reach out to one of us with questions and we can set a book hold and discuss whatever.
Okay, sounds great.
It's probably better because I would have to read through this all and.
Yeah, it's a little lengthy for.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in person.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Pleasure to be here. Any other questions? I know it's a lot to digest. Um.
Do you guys do the Chappaqua School District?
We do, our firm does, yes, I am personally not involved.
Okay, but your firm does.
Yeah, and we also do the town.
Got it.
Yeah, I'm not involved in that either.
Okay.
John may still ask.
Well, thank you, get home safe.
Thank you.
Yes, moving on to building and grounds.
Jen, was there anything you wanted to offer?
Jen, I said Jen.
Oh, John.
Buildings and grounds.
No, we're good. We're, I mean, things are moving along with the building assessment I spoke about and, um, you know, there's always something, we had a little sniffer with the boiler today, so that's being worked on and, um, yeah, but everything's pretty satisfied.
Did the library have a delayed opening today also?
We did, so I, I want, I would like, thank you for reminding me, I would like to mention that. So we had our, uh, full staff meeting recently and there had been some confusion around, um, openings, delays, so on and so forth. And so what we've decided is that if the school district has a delay, then we are, up to a two-hour delay, then we are on a two-hour delay. Anything beyond that, like today there was a three-hour delay, or if the school district's closed, we will be in a wait-and-see holding pattern because sometimes, you know, we might be able to open at one o'clock and it's still the opening delay.
That's a decision that you make as director, correct?
Correct.
And when, when the school has a two-hour delay, is that delay hour opening by two hours or just until the school district's two hours is left?
It delays us by, we have a number of staff people who drive and commute from long distances. Um, and even if they were around the corner, you know, if, if it's good enough for the school district to have a delay, nobody should be on the road, so.
Perfect.
Do we get any community weigh-in of an interest in having the library be a place children can go while waiting for schools to open or?
You know, i- i- it's my understanding from law enforcement that when there's a delay, they don't want anybody on the roads because they want to give the Sanders and Flowers an opportunity to clear the roads, so, yeah. Okay, works.
So we opened at eleven today?
Today we actually opened at noon because when it went to three hours, I just felt that we should just be careful.
Right.
So, yeah.
There's the first delayed opening, we've had this, yeah, maybe, yeah.
I think so, this year, the school year.
We had a delay, we had a delay recently, there was.
In November?
Yeah, November, there was something. Yeah, two hours.
Sessive rains and a coned outage.
Oh, right, there were trees down, and it was very messy.
On Seven Bridges and stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to personnel, John?
Personnel, okay, so we've got the employee handbook. Is this been passed through and we're feeling good about this, right?
Yeah, I think the attorneys have gone through it.
Okay, good. So just for the community to know that we've gone through a rather extensive process that's been going on for quite a while to update and review the employee handbook, and changes and edits have been made, and they have been approved by the board's attorney, and so and I've been party to many of these meetings, so I am happy to report that we're at the end of this long road, and I'm happy to propose that we, as a board, accept the revisions of the employee handbook as of December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Perfect.
Motion? Today's December sixteenth. Okay, I guess it was, today's the sixteenth, the handbook was updated yesterday, yeah, okay.
A second for your motion?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
Can you talk us through what you view as, you know, sort of the major points?
I'll defer to Jennifer.
Yeah, so I think, you know, when I got here, I looked at the last employee handbook, it had a lot of edits.
It was two thousand nineteen, right?
Yeah, yeah. But I had multiple iterations of the handbook, and, you know, with suggested edits and like that. And it was difficult to understand, so we went back and we kind of started from where it was in two thousand nineteen and looked at where we are now and what would serve the library as a whole best. So one of the things that we changed that's in here is that, you know, we have certain salaried employees who work between twenty-one and thirty-four hours in a work week, and, you know, we will no longer be hiring in those in that category, because those people are eligible for benefits, and that is not sustainable for the library to maintain over the long term. So that was one of the items.
So they're grandfathered, but.
Exactly.
Right, but not ongoing.
Exactly. And then if somebody who was in that category requested to reduce their hours, say from twenty-eight hours to twenty-six hours in a work week, you know, that won't be allowed anymore, that will just be, you have to stay at your Yeah, it's locked, or you have to, you know, retire. We also have a, one thing I do want to bring up, and I, just, give me a second, please, to find it, but I want to acknowledge the really great work that Marge did on this. She did a lot of legwork with the retirement system, nice shift, to get the language right. And one of the things that we found out was that the library many years ago had signed up for this perk that doesn't cost the library anything, but basically it allows employees who retire to get service credit for up to a hundred and sixty-five days towards their retirement. So it doesn't cost us anything, but it's something that they can get on the back end. Marge, am I saying this correctly?
It's for unused bank sick time.
Correct.
And so it advises while we, you know, we want employees to call up sick when they're sick, but we don't want them to bank sick time for nothing. Because at the end of the day, like, we should just call them sick a lot until you're better. Now they can get some credit for it. So it's a nice fact that we always had it.
Right, right. So that was one of the great things that you did, that you found out about, was that we already had this, and nobody knew, so.
It was not in previous employee, it was not. It's incredible.
I mean, they're giving it to people, but it's something you want employees to know.
Sure, of course.
Is this?
It's on page twelve.
This is a minor detailed question. Is this cover sheet part of the document?
This will be, if this is approved tonight, this will be formatted for our branding styles, and we can have this on there.
Yeah, my comment is just that this should be full name attribution to the people who worked on it, rather than just Marge, Robin, Jen.
Another thing that was, I think, Jen, you mentioned was getting clarity on the remote work policy. Like, we had had, as a lot of employers, including the federal government, is working on how to get the remote work policies to be clear, more transparent, and I think that this document reflects that.
Yeah, I think that reflects it too, and, you know, as I've said in previous meetings, remote work will stop on a regular basis as of January one, but there will always be a reason for remote work, whether it's, you know, somebody's doing an all-day conference from their computer, which, why should they come in here to do it? Or if somebody's got to catch up on collection development, but it would be on a case-by-case basis, and, yeah, that does, that is outlined in here, so.
But I think you had also mentioned, Jen, the possibility of a long-term solution of having space in the library where people could work in a quiet, uninterrupted fashion.
That will be something we have to address, because the back room where a lot of people sit is not conducive at all to get work done, it's a it's a pass-through for a lot of people, there are copy machines, people are processing books back there, people are on the phone. So we'll see what the coming months bring, and how that works, or doesn't, and what we need to do to address that.
I really want to thank, thank Robin, Marge, and Jen for all their hard work on this, on the employee handbook, and I think that we've accomplished the goal of having it in place for January twenty twenty-five, so that's very exciting.
So does that wrap up the major changes?
Yeah, I will add one other. There was some language that was very confusing regarding eligibility for retirement, and one of the things that, and Marge, I'm going to ask you to jump in here if I'm not saying this clearly, is that in order for someone to be eligible for health insurance in retirement, beyond, after after twenty, January one, twenty twenty-five, it would require the person to be meet, to meet a number of checkboxes, but also that they would have had to have worked in WLS for a minimum of ten years, and a minimum of five years at the Chappaqua Library. It was, the language was twenty years previously, and it was felt that that would really preclude the library from attracting talent, because if somebody was somebody my age coming in, and then they had to do twenty years, and from, to start the clock over, it might dissuade somebody from wanting to come here, so, yeah.
It's very good, very forward-thinking.
Did we add maternity or paternity benefits? We don't have maternity leave outlined in this in this handbook, but there is other types of leave that that would fall under, that is outlined in here.
We actually talked about that at a meeting, I think, right? I actually remember talking about this, yeah. And that it was, that that status fell within a larger category around family and medical.
Right. There are federal or state guidelines that we have to adhere to, even if they're not explicitly delineated in this document.
Oh, it's, are we ready for a vote, board?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of passing the employee handbook that's been updated, twelve sixteen twenty-four, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do we make a motion and second before we vote?
I did.
No, we did.
I made the motion.
Oh, no, that's, we did, that's why, why we went into discussion.
Jennifer, can you add to the board packet that we post a red line of this for the public? I'm sorry? Something that contrasts what we had before to what we're approving, that's what we do with policies and bylaws.
Yeah, we can post that, sure.
Does it have to be done that way, or could it be just a summary of the changes that were made?
Yeah, I mean, I can post a, the previous version and then this version.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other issue, this is, I guess this is falling under personnel, is the EAP program. And I would like the board to consider this. I guess the question I have procedurally is, do we have an exact dollar amount that we would be voting, we do, okay? So I'll just make the motion that the board adopt a benefit program for Chappaqua Library employees called the EAP Total Care, which is a what's the word we want to use for this, Employee Assistance Program, for, that will do all sorts of things that will enrich and support our hard-working and very dedicated Chappaqua employees.
At twenty, do we want to add that it's at twenty-five hundred dollars for the year? Okay.
It's a yearly, two thousand five hundred dollars with the opportunity to renew or cancel if we see fit. Right.
Where's that come out of in the budget? I'll wait, I'll wait till discussion, so.
First, do I have a second? Second, okay, discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about where that comes out, and it can certainly come out of our benefits line, it could also come out of, you know, professional development if we needed to do. I'd like it not to come out of professional development, because it's not, I mean, some of this can be used for your professional development, but
It's just a question we always have to ask.
Yeah, yeah, I think if we can, if we can pull it out of the benefits, then I would put, pull it out of that. And if that becomes, yeah, and if that becomes a problem, then we'll revisit it.
Yeah.
Well, as you're embarking on a new, on a new budget, well, we're going to institute this right now, I'm just, I'm slowly processing that. Right, so.
That's, that's the only reason I asked.
Uh-huh, no, great question.
It's mid-budget.
Okay, so, okay, so pending.
George, you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, so I would say pending any any situation where that doesn't look, then we'll bring back to the board where where the money should come from.
I think it's also important to note that many employers, including the school district, provide this kind of benefit, so this is not some kind of sort of out-of-the-norm benefit provided. And I think it does, it provides all sorts of supports for Jennifer when it comes to managing difficult personnel issues. And I think that giving her more tools to deal with personnel issues such as this, I think, is in the library's best interest, so.
Thank you.
Kudos to you for bringing it to the board, because I think you could have just approved it under your own authorization, so.
It's, it's a big thing.
Useful to bring it to the board.
Yeah, and I, you know, we had, we had a meeting with them, and, you know, the board members were in the meeting, and they all felt like it was beneficial. I didn't want it to just be a unilateral decision on my part.
Your inclusivity is really very admirable. Okay, is the board ready to take a vote, or is there any further discussion?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
So those are the personnel issues, the policy and bylaws issues. I don't have anything for us particularly to vote on in terms of policies and bylaws. So I have nothing at this point for us to tackle in that respect.
Okay.
And what are we doing about the officer term?
Okay, so, okay, so we don't, so Jennifer did some research, and our, and I also did some research into our handbook, and our handbook, the trustee handbook says that our, that, that officers change the first month of the new year. It's not a fiscal position. It doesn't align with
The approval of the budget.
With the budget, does not align. It's a, you know, a January to December position. And so that's number one. If we wanted to change that, if we wanted.
Well, the guiding documents are bylaws for this library.
The bylaws say that, that on the first of the year?
Yeah, yeah. Right, so, okay, so a couple of things. So that's how it's been done. And I think that there are reasons for not putting new trustees but, you know, one second after they are voted into their roles, into certain roles. Okay, because, one, it's an adjustment to the board, and two, it's also getting to, there's a learning curve, and where trustees are comfortable serving, as well as it's not, it's not our bylaw to like, that we have to put trustees in officer roles on July one. So since that has, is, is not, so, and also, we have a three-year term now, and not a five-year term. So people are cycling through positions differently. They're not cycling through every single position. So I think as a board, we have to open this up to discuss this, number one. Number two is that in our, as a result of our executive meeting last month, we, there's a motion on the table that we passed that we would line it up with the fiscal year, and if, you know, just been doing.
That's why I raised it.
No, which I appreciate.
You called a motion, we voted on it.
Correct.
But it was subject to.
Which, okay, so we don't have to change the bylaws, like, we don't have to, if we want to change this board to have trustee officers from July one to June thirtieth, we do not have to physically go in and change the bylaws. Having said that, I'm actually going, you know, I know that we made that motion, and we passed as a board, but I would like to retract that motion because of what, of the thinking of that I've been doing in the past month, which is, one, we don't have to line up with fiscal, and that that was an issue for me being president again, that if, if I just, if I ran and didn't win, you know, where would that leave the board? Okay, which is an issue anyway, if I run and don't win, that's something to discuss. The other piece of it is that I do think that trustees have a learning curve, and I think that being put into trustee officer positions in, you know, just being very, just not really knowing what's involved, is not in the best interest for the library, and it's not what has been done before. And now that we have a three-year cycle, that's also something else to consider, that taking the time to figure out what position do I want to be in, and be able to learn from those before us, and be mentored, and just like George was mentored by Brian before he became financial, there, I think we have to keep all of that in mind. So having said that, I I'm, I think we could open this, we can either open this up for discussion now, we can have an executive meeting to discuss appointments in January. I will do whatever the board would like to do about this.
Okay, so I disagree with the comment that we would not, to make the change that you proposed, we would not have to change our bylaws. We would. The bylaws read, "The board shall at its first meeting in each calendar year elect the above-named officers, blah, blah, blah."
It does say that, but I did, I did have multiple communications with the Division of Library Development on a state level, who looked at our charter, and she said, "You don't" "You don't have to do anything. You just had, would have to have a vote for the, to change the bylaws, but we wouldn't have to change the charter, we would have to have an amendment for the charter."
I don't think anyone said it's a charter change.
Well, it could have been, it could have been based on what the, what the language in the charter was, so that's why I wanted to find that out, so.
But just because the elections take place in January doesn't mean that the term of those, because the elections, I'm sorry, if we elect in January.
Right.
Who's going to be in what position, doesn't mean it has to take effect until a later date. I mean, we get elected in May, but we don't take office until July, so we could elect people to specific roles, but it does not necessarily, um, take effect until.
So you're saying you could elect people, people get elected in May, and then you're saying, okay, um, so in six weeks, they're going to become the financial people, they're going to become.
Right.
Policy, they're like, that, that they're, um, a- again, um, I'm going to say that, that the, the, the library has not, has not conducted itself that way, that the bylaw is the first month of the calendar year, which is January, so I think, I think that changing a bylaw is, is like a really big deal, and it was, it's, I think following those before us is, is something to really consider before we make a change to the bylaw. We made a change to the bylaw and charter because we, because people were not running for trustee positions, like, that's a big thing, that really impacts the, the, the library, that if you, we can't get people to run. I don't, I think that, I think it's just a big thing for all of the trustees, the decades before us, to come in and change something. If you, okay, like, so here, in this scenario, um, that my term is up in May, that.
Everyone's term.
What, no, my, my term is, is up in May, so, so maybe that's something to consider, like, when we were cycling through five-year trustees, right, your fifth year, you were a member-at-large, okay? So maybe the board.
Well, first year was, was the intention under five years. First, you came, came in, you're a member-at-large. Second year, you're secretary, third year, you're finance officer, fourth year, vice president. That's how it worked when we joined in twenty twenty-two.
Um, well, I'm not quite sure, because we didn't have a president that left that didn't run again in May, we, we weren't filling, we were filling spots on a calendar year, not a, not a budget year.
Right.
Okay, so that meant that Liz was not president her last year. You were, right, okay, so it.
Her last half year.
No, because you became president in December.
In January.
In January, you became president, so you were president.
Retired from the board in June.
Correct, but my point is, is that she, she was not, you, you had another, you were able to complete your year, so president is able to complete her year. Her last six months were as a member-at-large.
Right.
Okay, so then the board could decide to say, um, well, the trustee who, who is, who is, term is ending that May should not hold, you know, the following positions, does that make sense? And that makes sense.
Yeah.
That, that is an argument, you know, that's an argument, that's a discuss, I mean, a positive argument, but that's like a discussion to have, but.
It, it seems to me, and I've done some thinking about this issue, that this is, um, a, a solution in search of a problem, that up until the point at which we had this conversation about a month ago, I didn't see this as a problem at all. It did not strike me as anything that needed to have a lot of conversation, and now that we've been having conversations, I'm still not convinced that it's a problem, that we have a board reorganization in January. I don't think it's been a problem for the last X number of years, and looking forward into two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, I don't see it as a problem, and so if there's no problem, then why are we spending time sort of hashing this over?
That's a great question, because there's a motion on the table, because there was a motion.
There was a motion, I get it, and, and so procedurally, we're having that, that conversation, but I think that, you know, on some level, not every motion is necessarily worthy of deep consideration, sometimes they're not. I'll also say the following, which is that from a historical perspective, this board over the last five years has had a lot of turnover, and we have a new director who is doing a fabulous job, and I think that, um, making changes, further changes in governance right now is not in the board's best interest, simply because it's not a problem, as far as I see, and therefore, why change something if there's no problem, at least evident to me?
Well, we don't just fix problems, we add improvements.
And I don't see this as an improvement either, but that's just, you know, I, 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 I see it not as a deficit, something needing of improvement, and frankly, I think that, that we're in a good place in terms of our governance structure, and so, yeah, so why, why, why move down this road? If, if in a year's time or a year and a half time, upon further reflection, I think there needs to be a change, we can make that, but at this moment, I don't see that necessary. I, that's paramount.
Thank you.
So I was pleased when Pam proposed to this, um, which the board had discussed previously, because I do feel very strongly that, um, it would be an improvement, um, to better align the officer terms with the fiscal year that they represent. Just by means of explanation.
Okay, do you have any thoughts, want to share?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, um, moving on, our.
So we would need to make a motion to take back.
Take back that motion?
Yeah.
So as the personnel committee chair, I would like to today, tonight, make a motion to rescind any previous motions made by this board regarding the changing of terms of service for board officers.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second?
Okay.
So, again, we're voting now, just to be clear, on rescinding any previous motions regarding.
Correct.
Changes of board.
Calendar, the calendar.
Terms of ser-
Right, correct.
Service, okay.
Mm hmm.
I think we've had our discussion, although we could have a discussion now more.
Any further discussion?
Can we make this vote without Brian here?
Um, yes, we have a quorum.
We do?
Okay, um, all right, all in favor?
Of rescinding the motion?
Yes.
Okay. All against?
Against.
Okay. Thank you, um, okay, so, thank you, everybody, for coming. Our next meeting, please note, is Monday, January thirteenth, we've pushed it because of Martin Luther King the following week, and I move to, to adjourn the public meeting at eight twenty PM, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous.
Great holiday, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah.